Good evening, everyone. For those of you expecting Mayor Riordan or the deputy, they are both currently traveling back from the Federation of Canadian Municipalities Conference in Calgary. So you get the third stringer. But we'll make it work. So at 6:04, I'll call the Meeting of St. John's Common Council to order. And City Clerk?
Thank you, Chair. The first item on the agenda is the land acknowledgement.
And for that, we'll turn to Councillor Ogden. Councillor Ogden?
The city of St. John, Mennequest, is situated in the traditional territory of the Wurlu Stukyak, Malasi. The Wurlu Stukway, Malasi, along with the indigenous neighbors, the Migmaw and Pastapacwadi, signed peace and friendship treaties with the British Crown in the 1700s that protected their rights to land their lands and resources. Just a moment to reflect, please.
City Clerk?
Thank you. Next, I'd ask everyone to rise for the National Anthem.
And City Clerk?
Thank you, Chair. First business item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Item 2.1, minutes of May 27, 2024.
I'll take a motion on the minutes of May 27. Councillor Hickey, Councillor Stewart, on the motion, all in favor signify by saying aye raising your hand. Contrary minded, carry it. City Clerk?
Yes. Next item is item three, approval of the agenda. We do have a number of additions, so just bear with me and I'll read those out. So the first would be 17.1. It's with respect to an amended and restated membership agreement with Envision. Next addition would be 17.2, 160 Thorn Avenue Timeline Update and Changes to Agreement of Purchase and Sale. Next item is 17.3, Request for Expression of Interest for former West St. John Torres Bureau at 1509 St. John Thoroughway. 17.4, Land Exchange Agreement with Timothy and Donald Collins for Upper Lockholman Road. Next is 17.5, Venue Management Agreement for Trade and Convention Centre. Next, 17.6, Legal Proceeding Against BGC Engineering, West Wells Litigation Update and Torres Retainer. 17.7 is with respect to patio license for Market Square Boardwalk.
I'll take a motion on the agenda. Thank you, City Clerk. Councillor Norton, Councillor Radwin, all in favor signify by saying aye raising your hand. Contrary minded, carry it. City Clerk, item four.
Item four, Disclosures of Conflict of Interest, if we have any.
Seeing none, we'll move on.
Next item is the Consent Agenda, item five.
Councillor Norton for the Consent Agenda?
I'd move that we move items 5.1 to 5.4 inclusive and the addition of 17.1 to 17.7.
How about we save the 17s?
Perfect. Thank you, Your Worship, for the procedural advice there, 5.1 to 5.4 inclusive.
Thank you. A second to thank you, Councillor Stewart. On the Consent Agenda, we have Councillor Radwin.
Thank you, Chair. I have a question through you, I'm assuming to Commissioner Fogan. I'm just wondering on 5.3, the reconstruction of Charlotte Street, that portion of the street from Union to South King has a lot of businesses. And of course, we're doing a full reconstruction there. I'm just wondering what we're going to be doing to mitigate things to make sure that people are able to go in to businesses at all times. I don't know if Mr. Baker wants to take this or not. There was a lot of challenges with the Waterloo Street reconstruction, and I'm just hoping that we've, we're going to do some things differently this time.
Through you, Worship, to the councillor, it's actually not a full reconstruction. It is, it's a street reconstruction in a storm sewer, so the water and sanitary has already been updated.
Okay.
So it's a little bit smaller than some of the other jobs that we've done. When you look at that project, we're estimating that they could start in basically July sometime. And based on the value, we are expecting it to take until the end of October. But we do have in the, in the actual contract documents that if it's up to the engineer's discretion, that you may have to work six days a week in order to expedite the work. And we have all the standard tech, similar to what we had in Waterloo, ensuring that, you know, pedestrian traffic can get to the businesses. But one of the differences on this job is we're putting a storm sewer in instead of water in a sanitary sewer, so it's not as deep. We're not putting laterals to the, as many property lines. So hopefully we won't have as much issues on that, but it's definitely still disruptive.
Yeah, I mean, I have some concerns because I know you're going to be doing the sidewalks. So if the sidewalks ripped out, you know, is it going to be put down right away? Are people still going to be able to get into the businesses? I also think that we could be mitigating some of the challenges with signage. And I know that people could walk through on Waterloo, but if you had a scooter, a walker, or a stroller, you were not getting through there on Waterloo Street. It needs to be accessible or with a wheelchair.
And the intent is that they would be constructing access to kind of gravel. It would be gravel until we were able to get the ash or the gravel placed and the sidewalk put back on. Because they'll probably start with the pipe work and then work their way toward the street excavation. And then after that would be curb and sidewalk.
I'm planning on going to this information session. So there's two information sessions on Thursday, between 2:00 and 4:00, and one between 6:00 and 8:00 at the Trinity Church on the 13th. And I think it's important for people to get out there and ask these kind of questions. But the big thing for me is, I feel like, you know, four months, some of these businesses have been suffering as it is with COVID, inflation, and now we're going to throw four months of construction. So there's got to be a way to, you know, mitigate it so that maybe it's not the whole sidewalk at once. There could be signage there. I know that with the Waterloo Street one, there was signage saying that Tim Hortons was open, but there was nothing saying the other businesses were open on the other side. So anyway, I'm going to go, but I mean, I'm just kind of hoping, Mr. Baker, you can kind of help them kind of think through, how can this be accessible? And as far as I'm concerned, a wheelchair needs to be able to get through, and if they can't, then it's not accessible and we need to find a better way to do it. What are the other cities doing? Are they putting planks down and scaffolding? And I don't know. I mean, there's, but there's got to be a better way than what happened on Waterloo.
I'm not sure what other cities are doing. I know that other construction, it is definitely disruptive in the uptown. I know Fredericton has had the same sort of thing that is disruptive, but we can definitely chat in terms of what we can do to try and improve the accessibility to the businesses.
I know, I was speaking to one of the businesses and they said as long as like maybe their delivery company could be accessing their back entrance, so maybe there's different things like that to make sure that there's signage available there to let people know which other way to go or another area for them to park, whatever. But I mean, I'm kind of hoping that this information session will help kind of mitigate these kind of concerns.
And some of these also will be addressed once we actually know who is actually awarded the contract. At this point, we don't really know who that is, so a lot of those actual scenarios can't be worked out until we know kind of their schedule and what their plan is for the work. So at this point, it is out to tender right now, so we don't have that awarded and it should be closing next week.
I appreciate that. I think, you know, you can, you can certainly kind of set that expectation that this is what we're expecting too and, you know, because people still need to be able to get around our uptown core is just so important for the entire city and to keep these businesses going is of the utmost importance.
Councillor, you've made some good suggestions. Are you still okay with the motion? It's in the consent agenda? Okay. Thank you. Councillor Ogden?
Do you know how much money we spend on new construction as opposed to taking care of what we own already?
Off the top of my head, no, but it's supposed to be 20% of our capital budget is supposed to be toward new infrastructure as opposed to renewal. And the utility would be probably closer to 100% renewal.
Okay. Thank you.
Councillor Ogden?
Yeah, Michael, you mentioned something about six days a week. Could you explain that to me?
Yeah, so what we added in there is similar to what we added on Prince William Street was, we don't tell them that they have to work six days a week in the contract, but we say it's up to the engineer who's managing the project. If they're falling behind schedule or anything like that, we can tell them with no additional cost that they have to work six days a week to try and make up that schedule.
I like that, but you only do it for, for instance, I'll just give it like Garden Street, once you get to the next section of the top from halfway up to the top, is it in that agreement too or just certain agreements?
It's not, it's not in Garden. We, we did it on, we've done on Prince William where it's been around businesses.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Baker, is this something new that we are looking at adding going forward or was it particular to this project?
So what we're, what we're looking at, this is something relatively new that we're looking at to try and help with the process. We're also looking at bonus penalty type of clauses. It's much harder to do on Charlotte Street because we're also dealing with a large development in the area, so controlling timelines. I'd hate to have an actual scenario where we actually had to delete scope for something that we can't control and then potentially having to pay with a bonus that.
So would it be fair to say that our processes have changed, that we're now adding incentives in order for, for our contractors to stay on time?
We're trying to add bonus penalty, but we're not at that point yet. We will probably be in the near future.
Working towards.
Yeah, working towards that, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Ogden, back to you for times two.
Well, my question is, could one of the engineers explain to me, how did Fredericton, I know it's provincial government, but how did they get away with having 24 hours working on the Princess Margaret Bridge when we don't have it? And what, did, did the engineers in the city of Fredericton sit down with the engineers in the province and say, you know, we're going to have 24 hours a day? And if so, can we do that? Because when you look at the Harbour Bridge and the dysfunction of the engineering and the, and the building of this long, it's not, you know, even all these roads that are being torn up when we've got, we've got walkways, sidewalks that you can't even walk down. What can we do in this city to make life more walkable, more amenable to, to ourselves? I mean, do we have to just hunker down every summer and say that everything's closed? How did they?
Good questions, Councillor Ogden. Let's see if we can get an answer to the 24-hour one first.
Yes, like, well, how do we get, how do we get the engineers from the province to say, we're going to take on Harbour Bridge and do it 24 hours a day, just like they did in the city of Fredericton?
Our CAO thinks he has an answer.
Okay. Well, first off, Your Worship, it would come down to the type of work being done. And, you know, can it be done safely after hours around the clock? And, you know, just to differentiate, the provincial bridge structures are provincial assets, and what we're talking about tonight here is really municipal assets as opposed to the provincial bridges. But on the point of the bridges and the Harper Bridge and the Princess Margaret Bridge, a number of factors would have to come into consideration. You know, we have noise bylaws, but also the ability to get materials after hours, safety of the work to be done. Is it, is it simply a paving job or is there, you know, jackhammering and those sorts of things that, you know, you need good quality light in? So there's a number of factors that would be given consideration, but, you know, I don't know if that consideration has been given to our Harbour Bridge, if that's your question.
Thanks, Mr. CAO.
Councillor Ogden, how can engineers design and work 24 hours a day in Fredericton and not do it in St. John? And because we're talking about the same province in New Brunswick, and I would think that the, the Harbour Bridge engineers from the province would sit down with our engineers. And I mean, is there something we can do as politicians to say, why can't St. John be treated the same way Fredericton's being treated?
I would suggest, I think it's a very good question. I think many people in St. John are asking the same thing, councillor. Perhaps we could leave that with staff to go see what they can find out and come back to us. Okay. See, see what we can find out. On the consent agenda that we have before us, any other questions? Okay. On the question, all in favor signify by saying aye raising your hand. Contrary minded, carry it. Next item, City Clerk?
Thank you, Chair. Next is item six, Members' Comments.
Members' Comments. Start us off, Councillor Killen.
Thank you, Chair. First, I just want to acknowledge the peaceful protest that we just witnessed at the top of council this evening for missing and murdered Indigenous women. It is Indigenous History Month, and there is so much to learn from our past atrocities that were committed against those who were here first. And I really appreciate that we live in a democracy where people can show up to council and peacefully share their views and dismay for some of the things that are going on. And that leads into acknowledging that Pride is happening here across Canada in 2024. St. John celebrations are in August, however, many acknowledge this month as the kickoff of this, and we're doing so in a climate that is undeniably complicated and often divisive. We find ourselves amidst a sea of conflicting opinions, ideologies, and beliefs, some of which unfortunately target and marginalize members of the LGBTQIA community. Pride is not just a celebration, it is a reminder of the struggles, triumphs, and ongoing fight for LGBTQIA rights. It is a testament to the resilience and bravery of individuals who face discrimination and prejudice simply for just being true to themselves. However, let's not turn a blind eye to the divisive language and rhetoric that still surrounds the LGBTQIA community. We must confront these prejudices and misconceptions that perpetuate this discrimination and harm. We acknowledge that within our society, there are voices that seek to invalidate, belittle, or erase the identities and experience of LGBTQIA individuals. These voices, associates of division and hatred, seeking to undermine the progress we have made towards equality and acceptance. Yet despite these challenges, Pride endures as a beacon of hope and solidarity. It reminds us of the importance of standing together, united in our diversity and unwavering in our commitment to equality. So as we celebrate Pride 2024, let us confront divisive language and attitudes that seek to divide us. Let us strive to create a society where every individual, regardless of their sexual orientation, gender identity, or expression, is treated with dignity, respect, and compassion. Let us listen to and uplift the voices of LGBTQIA individuals, especially those who are most marginalized within our community. Let us work together to dismantle those barriers and prejudices as they stand in the way of true equality and acceptance. In the midst of this complicated climate, let us find strength in our solidarity and resilience. Together, we can overcome this divisive rhetoric and build a future where Pride is not just a celebration, but a reality for all. Thanks.
Thank you, Councillor Killen. Well said. Councillor Ogden?
For the past few weeks and for a few more days, the children of our community and the thousands will be planting the marigolds that they've grown since March break. We used to have a great celebration about it. We don't do that anymore. But they've done it for 27 years, and on top of that, we've been, the same Marigolds and Mural Group has been painting homes, and we've painted about 150 homes in the last 27 years and about 230 murals. I wish that we would promote that more in our city because it never gets in our city's promotions of this great thing that 80,000 citizens have done. It's just been forgotten about from terms of PR. But one thing I wanted to bring up was what we've heard from the children from get-go, from day one, and until even today, I recently worked with a group from Outflow who have been working with us, and even people who've been in tents and teachers and realtors and everything, is it gives us a great sense of purpose. And I think to move our city ahead, we've got to keep doing that type of thing, but when for our own mental illness, that having a sense of purpose is a great thing. So it's, it's sort of a, a project that goes unnoticed except by the citizens of our city, but I never ever thought about it being so important to things like mental illness when every day we get up, we have to have a sense of purpose. And I can't help but think about the people that we've lost in the tents and the people living in the shelters and such, needing that sense of purpose every day. And so I'd like to thank all the thousands of people who have participated for this. Thank you very much.
Thanks, councillor. Councillor Hickey?
Thanks very much, Your Worship. I want to thank Councillor Killen for such thoughtful comments tonight. I won't do them justice to either her eloquents, but want to echo her comments about June being Pride Month. Couple of events from the past week, Boys and Girls Club Day, celebrated on Friday at the Boys and, or at BGC in St. John. I had the opportunity to end up in a dunk tank. It was not very fun, but it was worth it for the enjoyment of the kids because they certainly had a lot of fun. Also, Port Days last week, an incredible celebration of the success we've seen at our port. Kudos to you, Your Worship, for the job you did at their AGM. And, and, and celebrating the work and accomplishments that have happened. Also, a couple, right after our last council meeting, Sophia Recovery Center opened up their new site in the North End. Want to congratulate them for a successful opening and what is sure to be many more years of success for their organization in that new space. Thanks very much.
Thanks, councillor. Thanks for not taking ourselves too seriously. We should all be in a dunk tank. Well done. Councillor Radwin?
Thank you, Chair. So actually on Wednesday, this Wednesday, from 5:00 to 7:00, there's going to be a showing called Hearts for Humanity, which is basically some education discussion at the Kent Theatre that'll be taking place about some of the conflicts going on in the Middle East. As well, Thursday, at the St. John Airport, is actually going to be having the, the networking event for the Chamber of Commerce. That should be a great event. Lots of great things happening at the airport, so I'm always happy to go there. There's been so much going on, and if anybody is looking to find out more about what they can do in St. John, check out Envision's Discover St. John website and Uptown St. John. You can always see what's going on in the calendars there.
Thanks, councillor. Few items to mention. First, I guess a few condolences. St. John lost Senator Joe Day recently. In 2001, Joe was able to fulfill his calling for public service when he was appointed to the Senate of Canada, where he served for 19 years until his retirement in January of 2020. His Senate work allowed him to pursue national change and drawing on his diverse background and amiable personality, he was able to do just that, working with all sides of the Senate. So certainly. able to do just that, working with all sides of the senate. So certainly, on behalf of councillor, condolences go out to Senator Day's friends and family. We also sadly lost councillor, past councillor Joe Cooglan. Joe had served two terms on city council, was also involved in the John Howard Society of Canada, a member of the Board of Governors at St. Thomas University, a board member at the St. John Regional in Rockmore Nursing Homes, as well as being heavily involved in his church, the Assumption Parish. So again, our condolences go out to the friends and family of past councillor Joe Cooglan. On some happier news, thanks for mentioning Port Days, Councilor Hickey. It was big for the city of St. John. We signed a partnership agreement with a group called AIVP, who are based out of France, who coordinate ports and port cities around the world to trade best practices. So they'll, they'll be taking some of the things we do well here. They're quite excited about seeing the 506 Container Village and the expansions we've got going on the west side, and I'm expecting we will also benefit that conduit because we will be able to get some good ideas from around the world. So that was important. The New Brunswick Soapbox Derby took place this past Saturday in front of PES School, and thank you to all of the volunteers who helped put that together, which includes some city staff who, in their volunteer time, are involved with that, plus the city and St. John Energy who connected them with power. It was a fantastic event. All sorts of happy kids driving down the hill. Speaking of St. John Energy, they held their annual meeting this past Friday and had lots of good news to share. Too much for me to take up the time here, but I know they're coming to a meeting in the not-too-distant future, so looking forward to hearing more from St. John Energy. I had the privilege of attending the swearing-in ceremony for seven new police officers this past Friday. So our St. John Police Force now has a full complement of officers. Two experienced officers moved and took jobs at the city of St. John, along with five new officers who were part of the new St. John Police Force sponsorship program. So as I was told by the chief, these seven officers will now bring us up to our full complement at the St. John Police Force, and certainly, on behalf of council, welcome to the seven officers who have joined the oldest police force in Canada. And my last note, we know that we've got a powwow coming to the city in the fall. This isn't that. Friday, June 21st, is Indigenous Peoples' Day, and just to give a shout-out that there are going to be activities between Fort Latour and City Hall going on through most of the morning with the rain venue being the Marco Polo Cruise Terminal. So watch your socials for more information on stuff happening uptown for Indigenous Peoples' Day. That brings us to 632, which is public hearings.
Thank you, Chair. That's correct. Our public hearings are advertised for 630. So the first one we have on the agenda is item 9.1, and this is a proposed municipal plan with a planning advisory committee report and staff presentation for property at 901 Foster Thurston Drive.
Thank you, City Clerk. I'll turn it over to our Commissioner of Growth, Ms. Pofnaroff, for an introduction.
Thank you, Worship and members of council. Before you this evening for a public hearing is an application for a municipal plan amendment that was submitted by 647102 NB Limited for the property located at 901 Foster Thurston Drive. The application is seeking to include the site within the primary development area, which will allow the property to connect to existing municipal water and sewer services. The application has been evaluated by staff and the planning advisory committee, and included in your package is the recommendations to rezone the property. I'll now turn it over to Mark Reed, the senior planner, for the staff presentation for this file.
Thank you, Amy. Your Worship and council, this application, as Amy mentioned, is a municipal plan amendment for the site at 901 Foster Thurston Drive. It's the former Cherry Brook Zoo site that was sold to the proponent. The applicant is seeking an amendment to the city's municipal plan to include the site within the primary development area, and this will allow for the site to be connected to the existing water and sewer services that are on Foster Thurston Drive. This is a sketch of the applicant's proposal. They're in the process of converting the existing buildings to a daycare center, along with a construction of a new building in the future for additional daycare spaces. This is a site plan here, showing the location of the site in red. It's along the east side of Foster Thurston, across from the Fieldstone Estates Development. This is a view of the site from Foster Thurston, looking to the south. The site is designated as park and natural area in the city's municipal plan. Currently, the site is outside the primary development area, which is the black line on the map, and the PDA boundary runs along the front hotline of the site. The applicant is seeking inclusion of the site within the primary development area, given this section of Foster Thurston Drive is served by municipal water and sanitary sewer. Connecting the site to municipal services aligns with environmental sustainability, as it would allow the site to be serviced without utilizing a well and septic system, and the approach is supported by both St. John Water and the city's Infrastructure Development Service area. Based on the review, community planning is of the opinion the proposal conforms both with the municipal plan and the provincial statements of public interest which govern municipal plan amendments. The site is zoned park, which does allow for the proposed daycare center. The zoning of the site is not changing. In terms of engagement, it was the standard engagement on this one with respect to the letters and the public hearing ad. In addition, there was a public notice earlier this year associated with the public presentation for the municipal plan amendment. PAC meeting, no letters have been received regarding the application. The applicant was the only person that appeared before PAC and was in agreement with staff's recommendation. Staff and the committee's recommendation are aligned to approve the municipal plan amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. I'll officially open the public hearing, which means I'll ask if there's anyone here to speak against the municipal plan amendment for 901 Foster Thurston Drive. I'll ask a second time, is there anyone here to speak against the municipal plan amendment for 901 Foster Thurston Drive? I'll ask a third time, is there anyone to speak against the municipal plan amendment for 901 Foster Thurston Drive? Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the municipal plan amendment on Foster Thurston? Second time, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor? Third and final time, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the municipal plan amendment at 901 Foster Thurston Drive? I'll close the public hearing and ask if council has any questions for staff. Counselor Lo? So there are two. There's first reading by title and second reading by title. So you're moving first reading by title, Counselor Lo?
Yep.
Secondary, secondary, Counselor Hickey. On the question, all in favor signify by saying a, raising your hand. Contrary-minded, carried. Do we also need a second reading by title? Oh, we need to read it. I was on a roll.
A law to amend the municipal plan bylaw.
Motion for second reading by title, Counselor Hickey and Counselor Radwin. On the question, all in favor signify by saying a, raising your hand. Contrary-minded, carried.
A law to amend the municipal plan bylaw.
Item 9.2, Commissioner Pofnaroff, would you like to introduce?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship and members of council. This evening's second public hearing is for an application for a rezoning and subdivision that was submitted by Dunnet's Landscaping LTD for the property located at 50 Heatherway. The application is seeking to facilitate a multi-building residential development containing five 24-unit buildings, 12 5-unit townhouses, and a new public street. The application has been evaluated by staff and the planning advisory committee, and included in your package is the recommendations to rezone the property. I'll again turn it over to Mark Reed for the staff presentation.
Thank you, Amy. Your Worship and council, this application is for a new residential development on the east side of Heatherway, on the east side of the city. The applicant is requesting the site be rezoned to mid-rise residential and the necessary approvals for a subdivision involving a new public street. As Amy mentioned, there is a total of 180 dwelling units, five 24-unit apartment buildings, and then five, or 12 5-unit townhouses. This is a sketch here of the site. The townhouses would be constructed in the western portion of the site. It's not on there.
We're there.
Oh, perfect. Thanks. The townhouses would be in the western portion of the site, adjacent to the Heatherway Drive, and the multi-unit buildings would be in the eastern and southern portion of the site. There's also potential for some additional two or three single-unit dwellings off of Wyatt Crescent. The site is located along the east side of Heatherway, across from Dunnet Drive and south of Wyatt Crescent. There was some clearing and site work that went on a few years ago with a previous subdivision proposal. It did not go through. This is a view of the site from Grandview Avenue. As you can see, there's an access into the site from Grandview and a cleared area where some work happened a few years ago. This is a view of the site from Heatherway. The applicant was in there late last year, early this year, doing some test pits to determine geotechnical conditions. This is a view along Wyatt Crescent, looking east. The area really contains a mix of residential topologies. You have single-family houses along Wyatt Crescent. There are townhouses in the area. There are similar-scale apartments and larger-scale apartments as well, further to the north. These are some recently constructed multi-unit buildings by, constructed by the proponent along Dunnet Drive. The site, in terms of the municipal plan, is designated as stable residential, as is the rest of the neighborhood. Policy LU88 is the key document that really directs staff in terms of determining whether or not the development aligns with the stable residential context. We note the stable residential neighborhood contains a mix of dwelling styles and types, and this neighborhood is no different. We have multi-unit buildings, townhouses, and a mix of zoning, including mid-rise residential, which is the zoning proposed for the site. The applicant has also engaged a consultant to conduct a traffic impact study, and no development-related traffic impacts were identified by that study. Based on the review, staff are of the opinion that the proposed development aligns with the municipal plan. The site is currently zoned 2-unit residential. The applicant is proposing to rezone it to RM, which does allow for all the dwelling types that are provided, and the proposed development layout meets the standards with the RM zone, with the exception of the front yard setbacks, which are a bit larger than that required by the bylaw. In terms of Section 59 conditions, staff are recommending that the existing conditions that were imposed by PAC and council in association with the 2008 rezoning be rescinded. Those regard blasting, and we note the city does not regulate blasting. We have the standard conditions with respect to detailed site and building plans at the building permit stage, as well as infrastructure servicing. We are also recommending that the landscaping of the front yards be to the commercial landscaping standard that has a set number of trees and shrubs per the required yard area. In terms of the subdivision, we're recommending the necessary council assent with respect to the new public street, money in lieu of land for public purposes, should there be any balance of LPP or money owing from the previous proposal, and any necessary local government or drain adjustments. And we're also authorizing the city developer subdivision agreement to cover the roadway infrastructure installation. In terms of engagement, letters went out May 7th to landowners within 100 meters of the site, and notice of tonight's public hearing was posted on the city's website on May 16th. PAC meeting, we did not receive any letters regarding the application. Two area residents appeared before the committee and had concerns with drainage associated with the proposed development. Staff and PAC, both of those recommendations are in alignment with respect to the rezoning of the site, subject to the recommended Section 59 conditions, and the necessary assent and authorization for, authorizations for the proposed subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. We'll open the public hearing for the zoning bylaw amendment at 50 Heatherway. Start by asking if there is anyone who would like to speak against this proposal. The second time, is there anyone here who would like to speak against this proposal? Third and final time, is there anybody who would like to speak against the proposal at 50 Heatherway? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of the proposal? If you just state your name and address for the record, and you've got up to 10 minutes.
Your Worship, your councillors, my name is Bill Dunnet. I'm president of Dunnet's Landscaping, and I live at 101 Cedarwood Drive in St. John. We're proposing to do 60 townhouses and five apartment buildings. As Mr. Reed said, that we're in the process right now of building 11 apartment buildings on the site across the street. So our schedule would look like that we would start the townhouses while we're building the buildings across the street. We still, we're on our fifth building right now. We have six more to go after that, and that'll take us approximately one year per building. We started four years ago, and we now have 96 residents living on Dunnet Drive. So then we would, we would work our way up the hill and to get to the apartment buildings. The apartment buildings wouldn't be taken into, under construction probably for another five or six years. We'll finish the other buildings first and then go on to that. But what, the whole time while we're doing that, we'd probably do 10 units a year of townhouses. If the market stays as hot as it is, maybe we'll do them quicker. We may even consider doing, speeding up the timeline on the apartment buildings. Things have been very good. The demand is, we're generally full before we finish the building. So that, that, that shows that there is a need and a demand right now. And we tend to build quite nice apartments. We don't go over the top so that we can keep the price, price point reasonable, and that seems to be successful for us. What else? I think that's about it. If we, I've got Bryce Taze here from Donmore Surveys, so if anybody has questions of a technical nature, he can answer them. Otherwise, I can answer any other questions.
Thanks, Mr. Dunnet. Question for Councilor Ogden?
Bill, congratulations. Treeless communities aren't as valuable as, as you know, being a landscaper, but I hope that you'll consider putting both hardwoods and softwoods that we have green in the wintertime in these areas, because communities with trees are more valuable in many ways, both from an economic and environmental point of view.
Well, as a landscaper, I don't know if it showed in the pictures, but we've gone a little further than most others. We've planted somewhere around 50 hardwood trees for what we've already done at the five units, and we've did a, we did a berm in the back with evergreens. It's very important to me that, that the site looks good. I mean, I was a landscaper for 35 years, so, you know, that's important to me.
Thanks, Councilor Ogden. Counselor Radwin?
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Dunnet, thank you for, for being here, first of all. And I'm also, I'm kind of wondering, so you mentioned that you probably do about 10 townhouses a year, so that would take you at six years. So if you did choose to do the apartments, how long do you think it would take you to do each one if you were to do them?
When we do the apartments, it takes, we're going to do the same apartments as we're doing across the street. So we start the apartment, well, it takes us exactly one year. We, we start, we have a cycle that we've been maintaining, that we start in April, and, and we have them fully occupied by April 1st.
Okay.
So it's really, you know, 11 or 12 months. We could go faster. I retired as a landscaper, and I really didn't have an intention of taking on a full-time job, but I've created one for my son, who works with me, and the idea is that this will transition him, and that's why we're asking for the whole thing to be zoned now, so that he has a future goal, that he knows where he's going to be in 10 years.
And I know there was a lot of And I know there was a lot of concerns at PAC about drainage. Just for the sake of the public, because I think a few more people watch the council meetings, can you just kind of elaborate on how drainage would normally work after your project is done versus how it was before?
Bryce, do you want to take this question? I will say, at the PAC meeting, there was a resident that suggested that we caused water problems in his, by the clearing of the trees. And we've done, I've met with the city officials, they came out and we looked at it, they agreed that we didn't have anything to do with it. And also, the engineers have looked at it, and it would, water would actually go up over a hill to get to his property, and last I checked, water runs downhill, not uphill. So, but, but we have designed a water, stormwater management system, and Bryce can talk to that.
That's great, thank you.
Good evening, council. I'm Bryce Taze, Donmore Survey's engineering. So regarding stormwater concerns brought up at the PAC meeting, as Bill mentioned, there was one resident on Grandview Avenue that had the basement issues, and us and city staff both reviewed it. We're not too certain it's correlated to the development itself. There was also some issues brought up about Wyatt, existing issues, and we believe that our development will actually improve this as we're taking a large portion of the site and now controlling it in a stormwater system. We bring it down the hill to Grandview Ave, or to Heatherway, store in a stormwater pond where we can control the flows, discharge it to the existing storm system. So, I guess, I don't know if that answers your question.
So it sounds like it could actually improve things in the area in general, if there's any issues right now.
We will definitely be reducing the area draining to Wyatt and naturally bringing it down the right, to public right of way.
Yeah, and it's my understanding that particular resident put in asphalt driveway as well, where it used to be like rock, so I don't know if that has any impact, but sometimes that can change your, the way the water's draining for sure. Asphalt will make everything run very quickly, so. No, that's great, I think that's wonderful, thank you.
Awesome, thanks.
Thank you, Councilor. Are there any other more questions for the proponent? Don't see any, thanks, Mr. Dunnett.
Okay, thank you.
I'll ask again, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of the zoning bylaw amendment at 50 Heatherway? Third and final time, I'll ask, is there anyone who wants to speak in favor of the zoning bylaw amendment on Heatherway? I'll close the public hearing. Are there any questions for staff? Seeing none, there are two motions required approving first reading by title and second reading by title. Councilor Radwin, question for staff?
Do, yeah. I do. Mr. Reed, I was just wondering, it looked like the traffic study may have showed that there maybe potentially might need to be a traffic light put in Heatherway and Grandview?
Yes, your worship, through you to the counselor, that was looked at, and it had to do not so much with traffic from the development, but existing traffic. And we reviewed that with the Mr. O'Reilly at Public Works in Transportation, and the city is of a differing opinion as to whether or not that light's required or what benefit it would have. But it's not, it's not attributable to the actual development, so.
I do wonder with us having less lanes on Heatherway, if that'll have an impact, too. We don't even know what'll happen there, but we'd probably be responsible finally after this gets approved.
And the, the consultant actually did look at the lane reduction in the analysis, so it was determined that, you know, even with the lane reduction, you know, traffic, you know, operations would still be acceptable.
Okay. No, I did that, Reed, that, that's great, thank you.
Thanks, Councilor. Any other questions for staff? Don't see any, so I'll entertain a motion for first reading. Counselor Stewart, Counselor Hickey, on the motion, question, all in favor signify by saying aye, raising your hand, contrary-minded, carried.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John.
Motion for second reading by title. Counselors Lowe and Stewart, on the question, all in favor signify aye, raise your hand, contrary-minded, carried.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John.
City Clerk?
Next item is 9.3, another public hearing. This is for a proposed zoning bylaw amendment with the PAC report and staff presentation for 435 Woodward Avenue.
Commissioner Pofneroff for introduction.
Thank you, your worship. This evening's third public hearing is an application for a rezoning that was submitted by Housing New Brunswick for the property located at 435 Woodward Avenue. The rezoning will permit the development of two 10-unit affordable residential buildings. The application has been evaluated by staff and the Planning Advisory Committee. Included in your package is the recommendations to rezone the property. And I'll now hand it over to Thomas Llewellyn, the planner for the staff presentation.
Thank you, Amy. Housing MB can construct, as Amy noted, two 10-unit buildings that are two stories in height. All 20 units will be one-bedroom apartments with both buildings featuring a shared laundry room on the first floor. The proposed development will have access on both Woodward Avenue and Borishead Road. The lot is currently vacant and heavily forested. The subject site is located in the Millidgeville neighborhood and fronts both, again, on Woodward Avenue and Borishead Road. The immediate neighborhood is mostly comprised of residential properties, with single-family homes and duplexes, and also instances of apartments. There are several schools in the immediate area, such as Millidgeville North and St. Millidge Plain, and various types of retirement homes and supportive facilities. While the sidewalk currently does not, does not extend to the frontage of the subject property on Borishead Road, it is slated for extension later this year. Subject site in the immediate neighborhood, excluding the previously mentioned schools, are designated stable residential. Properties located within stable residential designation are intended to evolve over time from a land use standpoint and a built form perspective. Given there are other instances of duplexes and apartments in the area, the proposal aligns with this intent, both from the perspective of gentle density, as well as the aesthetic cohesion with the surrounding built environment. Subject site is currently zoned neighborhood community facility. While the large neighborhood is mostly zoned one-unit residential and two-unit residential, there are instances of mid-rise residential, low-rise residential, and high-rise residential within the immediate area. Proposed development largely aligns with the standards established in the zoning bylaw and the RM zone. Variances regarding the front yard setbacks were reviewed and administered by the developments officer prior to the issuance of building permits. Letters sent to landowners within 100 meters of the subject property on May 6th, and there were no letters received prior to PAC or this meeting. Public notice was posted on May 21st. As a proposal conforms to the municipal plan and the zoning bylaw, staff and PRC recommending approval of the application to rezone the site to mid-rise residential. Staff and PAC are also recommending the placement of Section 59 conditions in relation to the accesses of both Woodward Avenue and Borishead Road to incorporate traffic calming elements to reduce instances of cut-through traffic. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Llewellyn. I'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody here who would like to speak against the proposal for 435 Woodward Avenue? Second time, is there anybody here who would like to speak against the proposal for Woodward Avenue? Third time, is there anybody here who would like to speak against the proposal for Woodward Avenue? Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the proposal for Woodward Avenue? Second time, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of Woodward Avenue? Third time, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of the proposal for Woodward Avenue? I'll close the public hearing. For Councilor, are there questions for staff? Counselor Killen?
Thank you, Chair. Thanks, Thomas. So is this, am I correct in saying this is the first MB Housing project that we've seen?
In, I think, 20 years.
Oh my gosh, okay, yeah, that's, and they're not here to, to?
There is, the applicant is six, so someone is filling in virtually. And if there are questions for them, they are available.
Okay, very good. No, just glad to hear it, that's all, thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Radwin?
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick question. I know the city doesn't regulate blasting, but are, is anybody that's blasting, do they have to comply with the noise bylaw? So they can be doing this at like 2:00 in the morning or something?
Any instance of construction would have to follow the noise bylaw.
They would, okay, good enough, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you. This one requires first and second reading by title. I'll entertain a motion. Thank you, Counselor Stewart. Moved, second by Counselor Lowe. On the question, all in favor signify by saying aye, raising your hand, contrary-minded, carried.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John.
We need a second reading by title. Counselor Radwin, Counselor Hickey, on the question, all in favor signify by aye, raising your hand, contrary-minded, carried.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John.
Thank you, next item, City Clerk.
And the final item for the public hearings is a proposed zoning bylaw text amendment, excavation and filling, with planning advisory committee report and staff presentation.
Commissioner Pofneroff?
Thank you. This evening's final public hearing is for an amendment to the city's zoning bylaw that was facilitated by city staff for a text amendment associated with the filling and excavating of land. The application is seeking to expedite the existing approval process associated with site preparation. The application has been evaluated by staff and the planning advisory committee, and included in your package is the recommendations to rezone the property. And I'll now, again, turn it over to Mark Reed for the staff presentation.
Thank you, Amy. Your worship and council, this is a minor housekeep, textual housekeeping amendment to the city zoning bylaw. What we're looking to do is enable the cutting and filling of land, so filling or excavation of land that's over a meter in height. We're looking to enable that if it's conducted by a level of government or a government agency. It does provide for additional flexibility for government agencies in site preparation and their daily operations. There still would be a development permit required that is reviewed by both the community planning and infrastructure development service areas. Relatively minor amendment, it involves two sections of the zoning bylaw, generally highlighted here on the map or on the screen. 9.71C pertains to the filling of land, so we're looking to extend clause two to add basically other levels of government in addition to a public utility. And the same thing with respect to the clause in the section that governs filling of land. We're looking to expand that beyond a public utility to, you know, a local provincial or federal level of government. Engagement on May 16th, public notice of tonight's hearing was posted on the city's website. Staff and PAC, we did not receive any letters at PAC. No letters have been received regarding the application. PAC is aligned with the staff recommendation to approve the text amendments to the zoning bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak against this text amendment to the zoning bylaw? Second call, is there anyone here who would like to speak against this text amendment to the zoning bylaw? Third and final call, is there anyone here who would like to speak against this text amendment to the zoning bylaw? Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the text amendment to the zoning bylaw? Second call, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of the text amendment? Third and final call, is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the text amendment to the zoning bylaw? I will close the public hearing. Is there any questions for staff? Seeing none, this requires first and second reading by title. I'll take a motion. Counselor Radwin and Counselor Killen, on the question, all in favor signify by saying aye, raising your hand, contrary-minded, carried.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John.
Motion for second reading by title. Counselor Norton, Counselor Stewart, on the question, all in favor signify by saying aye, raising your hand, contrary-minded, carried.
A law to amend the zoning bylaw of the city of St. John.
City Clerk, get us back onto the agenda.
Yeah, so we will move back to proclamations, and the first proclamation, there are three tonight. The first one on the agenda is 7.1, and this is a proclamation for Nigerian Democracy Day.
Whereas Nigerian Democracy Day is a national public holiday in Nigeria to commemorate the restoration of democracy. Whereas following years under military dictatorship in 1999, Nigeria introduced its first democratic constitution and later adopted June 12th as that country's Democracy Day. Whereas June 12th, 2024 marks the 25th anniversary of Nigeria's democratic constitution, and whereas in light of St. John's quickly growing Nigerian community and all their contribution to our city's political and economic livelihood, it is our shared belief to emphasize something Canada and Nigeria share as precious as commitment to democracy in the world. Now therefore, I, Counselor Gary Sullivan, on behalf of Mayor Donna Nod Riordan of St. John, do hereby proclaim June 12th, 2024, as Nigerian Democracy Day in the city of St. John.
Next, we have item 7.2. This is for World Kidney Cancer Day.
Whereas the International Kidney Cancer Coalition has declared Thursday, June 20th, 2024, to be World Kidney Cancer Day. And whereas the theme this year is listening, by highlighting the benefits of shared decision-making, helping patients feel empowered to seek a second opinion, and creating awareness around misinformation and how to check if sources are reliable. And whereas Kidney Cancer Canada, Cancer Degré Canada, is a national bilingual community of patients, caregivers, and health professionals who work to provide every Canadian touched by kidney cancer with support, education, and advocacy for their care pathways and treatment options. Now therefore, I, Counselor Gary Sullivan, on behalf of Mayor Donna Nod Riordan of St. John, do hereby declare Thursday, June 20th, 2024, as World Kidney Cancer Day in the city of St. John.
And the final proclamation is item 7.3. This is for World Refugee Day.
Whereas the General Assembly of the United Nations adopted a resolution naming June 20th as World Refugee Day to celebrate and recognize the courage, strength, and contributions of refugees throughout the world. And whereas Canada has a longstanding tradition of providing refuge to persons in need of protection and is a signatory to the 1951 United Nations Conventions relating to the status of refugees in its 1967 protocol. Whereas the theme of Refugee Week 2024 is finding freedom, family, and encapsulates the profound journey of resilience, strength, and unity that defines the refugee experience. And whereas the city of St. John and its people continue to welcome refugees and make resources available for refugees and their families to have a dignified life. Now therefore, I, Counselor Gary Sullivan, on behalf of Mayor Donna Nod Riordan of St. John, do hereby declare June 20th, 2024, as World Refugee Day in the city of St. John. City Clerk?
Next item, Chair, is item 12.1, and this is from the chief administrative officer, an update on catalytic projects and advocacy.
COM McGovern?
Thank you, your worship. Good evening. For the catalytic projects update, I'll provide an update on one of the advocacy projects and three of the infrastructure projects, starting first with housing and as it relates specifically to the Housing Accelerator Fund. The funding agreement we have requires that the city permit 1,124 units over the next three years, with a minimum of 9% being affordable. Staff are currently on track to meet the Housing Accelerator Fund target. In 2024, building permits to date have issued for 303 residential units, which makes up 25% of the Housing Accelerator Fund targeted completion. Seven of the eight Housing Accelerator Fund initiatives are underway. Three RFPs have been issued and will close this month. That's governance reform, zoning bylaw reform, and schematic design catalog. An RFP has been awarded to conduct the North End combined sewer separation strategy as part of the North End Secondary Plan Initiative. And an RFP for the preparation of the North End Secondary Plan Initiative will be issued this month, and our plans is to award that towards the end of July. I'll switch into our catalytic projects. In the schools, the innovative Central Peninsula Learning Commons, the Province Anglophone South School District and City are continuing planning work on the new South End School located adjacent to Rainbow Park and the new North End School on Ropewalk Road adjacent to the YMCA. With funding confirmed for the construction of the community hubs for both schools, the Province has informed the city that some site preparation work for the South End School, including the demolition of houses on St. James Street, will proceed this spring and summer. The North End School- The North End School and the province has stated will open in September 2027, and they have also just submitted a planning application to the city to rezone the properties that they've acquired surrounding Rainbow Park to enable the construction of the South End School. The Turner Brewery Memorial will remain in Rainbow Park at an alternate location, and the city is in ongoing discussions with the school board regarding the use of parts of Rainbow Park. And the city and the province will begin public engagement for the South End School and Rainbow Park enhancements in the month of July. With respect to the investment in the city's industrial parks, the new industrial parks nonprofit entity now exists. The board, I expect, will soon be populated, and we'll get into board orientation. The city is working closely with the province in assessing opportunities and in opening up additional land for investment opportunities in our industrial park. And finally, with respect to the redevelopment of the Fundi Key, on the private development at Fundi Key, construction of the first building is underway. Concrete foundation pours have been ongoing. And as it relates to Market Slip and the space known as Idoli Makahamek, I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner of Utilities and Infrastructure Ian Fogan to provide an update on that space, not only as it relates to our experience with the patios as of late, but also more generally as to where we are with that project as it's getting near to its completion.
Thank you, Mr. CAO. Just to provide a brief update to council on this project, as some of the updates I'll just review in the past, gone over, the rink has been fully commissioned and we're currently just adding the last components to get that space ready. The stage is also on the final commissioning, and you'll see in the short order of this week and next week, some monitors being installed to the sides of the stage and also installing some cameras and lighting in the final stage, final stage of construction of the stage. Sorry for that pun. The washrooms in the stage building are complete, and you'll see throughout the area as well that the seating has been installed. Also, the, one of the questions I think we brought up on one of the councilors before is around Loyalist Rock. It has found a new home in a prominent spot next to the Harbor Passage. Title steps are complete, and you can witness the power of the tide at the bottom of the title steps if you have a chance to look over. Some of the bottom steps, the bottom level has already been filled in just by the tide pushing rather large rocks onto it. The one portion of the dock has already been installed as well. The other portions are waiting till we get the, some of the guides installed, and then the last bit that should be coming in the next couple of weeks. The rock pool and fountain is also complete, just the lighting is the last piece to be commissioned for the, for the rock pool and fountain. Harbor Passage, you'll see the painting take place on the Cranberry Trail about the third week of June, which will spring around all the way around the Fundi Key site. And the last portion to be completed will be the promenade to the Hilton, which also we should see the next couple of weeks. Which brings me to the patios. Just a reminder where we came from on this. Maybe a little hard to read on the slide, but the patios themselves are glassed and patio next to an existing structure, and they're not found for in code. In order to allow for occupancy, what they, they had to seek what they call an alternative solution in order to make the space safe. So an alternative solution was proposed by our consultant, RJ Bartlett, and included components such as fire alarms, sprinklers, and non-combustible furniture. And this alternative solution was reviewed by the Office of the Fire Marshal. As we approached the expected date for the completion of the construction, there were still some components, such as installation of the fire alarm, that had not been completed, and some of the testing had not been completed. Sorry, so we were working. The alternative solution also included some key components, key assumptions on the completion of the patio space. I should have came up with my glasses, but I didn't. Can't even read my own writing here now, but. The, one of the components that we tried to look at for a solution for interim occupancy with the RJ Bartlett recommending that we have a dedicated fire watch for the space in order to allow for interim occupancy while the testing of the components were still ongoing. This was completed and including an inspection from fire prevention and building inspection. Then last week, while we were working towards the alternative solution, the interim fire watch was, idea was rejected by the Office of the Fire Marshal. So now we're working towards our reopening. Originally, the Office of the Fire Marshal had said that with the rejection of fire watch, we needed to complete all of these systems. To complete all the systems in a verification by RJ Bartlett, our consultant on fire code, it would require that all these systems be completed, be tested, be signed off by their respective engineers, and then an integrated systems testing be completed by RJ Bartlett in order to allow for occupancy. So we began working towards that and at the same time trying to convince the Office of the Fire Marshal to allow us for an interim occupancy. And currently, we're still working both those directions to see if we can reoccupy the patio. I can say now that the fire system is active and the sprinkler system is active as well. And all that remains is some sign off and some testing and the integrated systems testing. So while we have active systems, we still are proposing even as of today to see if we can bring back a dedicated fire watch with the systems being active. The only thing outstanding would be the reports and final sign off. And with that, if there's any questions.
Thanks, Mr. Fogan. Counselor Hickey.
Thanks very much, your worship. First question to the CAO on the Housing Accelerator Fund. Brent, you mentioned Ian, you're going to want to wait right there, though. Brent, we had talked about part of that Housing Accelerator Funding meeting affordability thresholds as part of our, as part of our permit applications. Are we meeting that threshold as well as the permit numbers?
Yeah, so in terms of the affordable, if that's what you're referring to, that's 9% out of the 1,124 units. I don't have the number on my fingertips right now, but in terms of the development this evening, for example, there's 20 units right there. So that's a big component of the 9% of our 1,100, and there are others that are being worked on as well.
That's great. Maybe if just as hopefully moving forward as part of that update, we can include that metric just to know that we're in keeping with where we should be both on the large scale of units, but also affordability, too.
Yes, and absolutely, we can do that. And this is something that we'll be discussing at our Growth Committee as well on a regular basis as far as an update in terms of various metrics we're tracking.
And Commissioner Fogan, it's certainly disappointing to have the excitement of what the, of what Market Slip is overshadowed by some difficulty this past week. I know I've been eagerly watching it from my office and really enjoying the progress and what is going to be an incredible public, $15 million public asset. As it relates to the patio closures, like obviously we didn't, obviously it wasn't a case of we didn't include the Fire Marshal's office early enough because we have. So like, how did we, how did we, how did we get here? How did we get a false start opening and then end up, end up closed? Can you highlight that a little more?
Sure. We will conduct, I think, an action review just to see how we got there, but in summary from what I can surmise, the alternative solution put forward by RJ Bartlett included a number of conditions. And as I said during the presentation, we didn't meet all those conditions for final occupancy. And so then an adjustment was made via a letter, assuming certain conditions were in place, to allow for a fire watch with an interim occupancy. So both our building inspection and local fire inspection both reviewed the space with a view to that, those conditions and with the proposal as outlined by RJ Bartlett, found it to be compliance, and that's how interim occupancy was granted. When the Office of the Fire Marshal was notified, they rejected that notion and said that, no, they weren't satisfied with the, with these measures that have been taking place and ordered a closure of the patio.
Is there any kind of, I know you've offered the timeline, kind of highlighting what's happening this week. Is there any kind of specific timeline, like do we have a date, or is it just we're waiting on the Office of the Fire Marshal? And that's, and that's on them?
No, well, so there's, I guess there's two paths we're pursuing. So we're hoping with the systems being active and having confirmed that today, that we can reengage with the Office of the Fire Marshal and see if we can get a fire watch back in place with the systems being active. Not, we don't know how they'll react to that, given that they've already ordered closure once. But the other path which we're also pursuing is to finish construction and getting all the systems tested and complete. And I can say that the fire alarm system, while active, there is an issue with fire shutters on the existing building, and we haven't finished the solution to that yet. So I don't know how long that will take to get that fixed.
Right, yeah, disappointing for sure. I will say thanks to you and your team and the CAO and to the, to the chief behind me for your diligence on this. It's been at the forefront of, I think, our discussions in our minds in the community, but also with four businesses on the line, too, who have had many, three long years of challenges. So this is not ideal, but I appreciate the diligence you guys have offered and the effort to find workarounds and to work on things. I think at one point on Thursday or Friday, the chief was going to put a pumper truck in front of the, in front of Market Square. So, you know, those, we've considered everything, we've offered everything within our capacity, and I'm confident of that. Now it's a matter of making sure we get them open as quickly as possible. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Radwin.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Fogan, it sounds like the reason why we had issues actually is because this glass metal solarium is not in the building code.
Or an attachment as being attached to an existing, to a building, yes.
So there's nothing really regulating it out there. So I'm just kind of thinking, when you do everything that you think that you need to do this week, is it going to get approved? I mean, if there's no regulation there to say you need to do A, B, and C, then who's to say that the Fire Marshal's not going to come back and go, well, I'm not comfortable with this now? So how can you feel comfortable with that? Is there anybody that can give you that sort of confidence that if you do these things, then everything will be a go?
Yes, through the Chair, to you, Counselor. So this isn't unusual that you come up with a certain circumstance that's not laid out exactly in code. As you imagine, code can't contemplate every circumstance.
Sure.
So they do rely on what they call this alternative solution. We have other buildings in the city which, which they've done the same. And what they normally rely upon is if the engineer is prepared to stamp that alternative solution and all the conditions are met and everything's accepted per that, usually it's not an issue then to render occupancy.
Well, I like Counselor Hickey, you know, I was very disappointed to kind of see this happen because they were open for a few days. So you did get the green light and then everything gets shut down. So I did speak to a couple of the restaurateurs on Thursday, and of course, they're frustrated as well, but, but they, they communicated with me that staff are trying to be vigilant, trying to do everything so they know that and appreciate that. Hopefully, we get the, the green light again this week because everybody's looking forward to those patios being open. Thanks, Commissioner Fogan.
Are there any other questions from council? I guess my comment to close it off. The mayor and deputy left Wednesday night, and Thursday morning I was told the patios were closing. And I know that I've been constant contact with city staff since, and our staff have been doing everything they can do to continue to work on this and move it forward, communicating with the restaurateurs at Market Slip, communicating with the Office of the Fire Marshal, and working as diligently as possible to get it reopened as fast as possible with the approval of the Office of the Fire Marshal. So kudos to staff for their continued efforts on this. That's a receivin, looking for a receivin file. Thank you, Counselors Hickey and Radwin. On the question, all in favor signify by aye, raising your hand. Contrary minded, carried. City Clerk.
Thank you. Next item is 12.2, and it's a cleanup of unsightly premises on Prince Street staff report.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioner Popenroth.
Thank you, your worship and members of council. Before you this evening with this item is a recommendation from the Community Standards Program, one of the city's key property compliance programs. This program focuses on issues that impact the aesthetics, enjoyment, and pride of a neighborhood. Through the program, staff work to address unsightly premise, zoning bylaw issues, and general upkeep of properties. The program was expanded at the beginning of 2024 through a pilot program that dedicated an additional full-time staff member to the program. So far, the pilot has been very successful with 145 cases already resolved this year, which surpasses last year's total of 125 resolved cases and is projected to surpass the pilot target of 250 resolved cases in 2024. To achieve these results, enforcement action sometimes becomes necessary, which is why this matter is before you this evening. And with that, I'll hand it over to Ben Pirenton. He's the manager of Community Standards Compliance, and he'll provide a brief overview on the specifics of this file. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Popenroth. Good evening, your worship and members of common council. Today I'll be providing a brief overview of the Community Standards Program filed before you, item 12.2 of the agenda. The properties before you on Prince Street are vacant lots located on the city's west side that had contained unsightly debris. After multiple attempts by our officer to gain compliance from the owner, notices to comply were issued requiring cleanup of these properties within 15 days. That timeframe expired without action from the owner, and as a result, staff prepared the recommendation for this evening to authorize cleanup of the properties. However, over the weekend, the properties were cleaned up, fully addressing the conditions outlined in the notices, and therefore, the recommendation prepared for this evening is no longer necessary. So staff is recommending that common council receivin file this report and presentation as the enforcement case on the property has been closed. A director of the company that owns the properties, Matt Doherty, was informed that city cleanup would not be proceeding due to the property being cleaned up. So the following exterior photos of the previous unsightly conditions can be found on pages 361 to 366 of the council packet. And in addition, there are photos not included in the council packet that show the current state of the property as of noon today. So I'll run through those photos. So this is in Ariel. And then this is last week, so June 3rd. And this is today. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions. And as briefly as I mentioned, staff recommendation is to receivin file this presentation and associated report.
Thank you, Mr. Pirenton. Counselor Hickey.
Thanks very much, worship. Any indication from staff as to how long it took us to put this report together and issue compliance?
Through your worship to counselor, I don't have the exact number of hours and how long it would take to prepare the report.
But it's hours, it's not 20 minutes. It's hours.
It would take, it would take some hours, yes. And in addition, a notice to comply was issued prepared by our officer or by the enforcement officer, and it would have taken hours as well to prepare that.
So no question, it took us, it took us longer to enforce than it would have taken to clean it up, right? And I mean, I could walk you down any street in the uptown and show you eight lots that look just like that one. So what needs to change in our bylaw to? you eight lots that look just like that one. So what needs to change in our bylaw to eliminate the significance of bureaucracy that's held, that holds up a file like this to be able to, to be able to enforce it effectively and not have to bring it here to issue a notice to comply for these low-hanging fruit like this?
Through Your Worship to the Counselor, so the, the bylaw is actually directly copied from the Local Governance Act, so it's actually outlined by provincial legislation. So it's not able to be changed by the city, it would have to be changed by the province. I will say, though, that as Amy had previously mentioned, Commissioner Poffenroth, that we've cleaned up or resolved 145 cases so far this year, and I believe this is the first one that we brought forward to Common Council. So, you know, occasionally, it does become necessary to bring one forward, but because we do this on occasion, it allows us to resolve the other 144.
So it just becomes another item that we add to our list of municipal reform advocacy efforts, right? It, it's incredibly frustrating. I mean, this is, would have taken someone 25 minutes to clean it up. Barry could have mowed the lawn. Easy.
Thank you. Counselor, for a rebuttal, Counselor Ogden.
Yeah, so when you contacted this Mr. Matt Doorty, what company does he represent?
Through Your Worship to the Counselor, we would have contacted the director of the company.
And what's the name of the company?
I believe it's a numbered company. I don't know the exact, it's in, it's in the file.
So why would they use a numbered company?
I, I can't speak on their behalf as to why they would.
So a numbered company under Mr. Matt Doorty was contacted how long ago by you?
We would have established contact when we had opened the case, and the case was opened April 12th.
So from April 12th, as Counselor Hickey just said, that's been two months, and that's, this could have been easily cleaned up. In the last minute, which was this weekend, it was cleaned up. So we've got to do something with that law if people are really, they're, they're playing with the law with, instead of just doing the right thing for the community. On top of that, on the other side of that bridge going down Lancaster Avenue, if you go down to Reversing Falls, which we've cleaned up as volunteers many times, there's also a, a building there with a number of automobiles and other garbage in the building, sometimes even parked out on Lancaster Avenue, because I've had calls about it in trailers for the whole weekend. There's also a lot of garbage down over the hill, construction materials and everything when you go down to Reversing Falls, and all the tourists see that when they look up the hill. And we're trying to keep the Reversing Falls park clean. So have you dealt with that building, too? That's, it's just down on the right-hand side over the bridge, about the second house end. Do you know if you've dealt with that building?
Through Your Worship to Counselor, I, I believe we have an active enforcement case on that location. I'm, I'm not able to get into the details of any specific.
Is there a chance that you could look into that?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Killen?
Thank you, Chair. First of all, Ben, congratulations on your appointment this evening.
Thank you.
As part of the consent agenda, so you can do some of that enforcement work by the looks of it, which I'm sure will be extra fun for you. Okay, yeah, I want to thank the constituents who I spoke to about this issue, because there were quite a few of you out there who were really concerned with this, as you should be. I guess I'm just wondering how we can make sure, because it is like, you know, there'll be more garbage today or tomorrow. So how, how do you, how confident, I guess, do you feel that we're going to be able to maintain this level of cleanliness over there?
Through Your Worship to the Counselor, we've had, we've had runs in the, in the past with these kinds of properties. I will say that through our enforcement actions that we've taken, we've shown that we're serious about addressing the bylaw that we have.
Right.
So we're confident that it won't be ignored in the future, and that it'll just be addressed when we call the first time.
Yeah, so you guys can keep going back if there is more issues.
Absolutely.
There's no, nothing precluding me from that. Okay, great, thank you very much.
Counselor Redwin.
Thank you, Chair. I'm just really upset, and it has nothing to do with staff. What a waste of staff time. So as another business owner, I think that we should all be very responsible in making sure that our properties look good, that there's not garbage laying around. As a homeowner, I try to do the same as well. When sometimes garbage is blowing onto your lawn, you go out and pick it up. So, you know, let's just start doing the right thing so that tax dollars are not being utilized in this way. About 20 minutes to pick up that garbage. This is just so unacceptable that staff time have been utilized for this. Thank you.
Counselor Norton?
Yeah, no, thank you, Your Worship. Just one last question through you to, to Ben. Congratulations as well, absolutely, as Counselor Killen said. Is there, is there anything in the existing bylaw that could be changed through a legislative process to strengthen it? Like, is that something that we've, how old is the existing bylaw? I guess that's what I'm asking.
Through Your Worship to the Counselor, I believe it was adopted as part of the Local Governance Act when that reform had changed. So I believe that was around 2017. I'm not certain on the exact, 2017, 2018.
About a decade old. It's, it's getting.
It's, it's been in place. It was, it was also part of the Municipalities Act before that, so it likely was.
Okay, so it is, okay, it's getting, it's getting along in the teeth. Like, I don't want to, I don't want to add more work to, to stop, but it would be, like, one of the things I think about is, with things like that, with things like this, usually, seeing the community, it's like repeat customers, like you're going back and knocking on the same door. I mean, for everybody, so many people drive through, through this corner, and so many people see this area. I, I don't know if there's anything that can be done or staff can recommend in terms of, that they can, that they can do in Frederickton to, to strengthen our existing bylaw, but I, I can only help, I can only hope, I think, you know, a police officer pulls you over and he gives you a verbal caution, and gives you a warning the next time he sees you the next day, he pulls you over, you might have to get a ticket that time. I don't know how many times we have to keep knocking on somebody's door before, before we're able to issue a fine, or there's, there's some way to, to scratch back some of the dollars that were spent in order to, to go visit the property again. So I hope at some point, we modernize and we strengthen this existing bylaw to give, to give staff more, more teeth, so to speak. And I would say we do that with a lot of things, and 10 years is a long time. I mean, it's, it's old. So I think that's something that needs to be done. And if we have to use provincial, provincial contacts to do that, that's great, but I think it's, I think it's worth, worth a visit. So it's discouraging, that's for sure. So thank you. Not to take away from the others that you've had tremendous success with, but this guy, yeah, it's frustrating. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor. Commissioner Poffenroth, the comment?
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Your Worship, and through you to the Counselor. I mean, there's a few things to keep in mind here. It is rare that we would see a property like this would actually get to this point. With 145 cases we've already resolved this year, you know, we're having a lot of success getting voluntary compliance, which is really what we want to do. It's the best use of our resources. And the, the more we're out there, people know that we're working hard on these programs, and the, the more often that they will comply. But there is a point where we need to keep an eye on perhaps repeat offenders. There are other tools in our, in our toolkit that we can use. We can lay informations, we can issue administrative penalty notices, but these are also things that are quite labor-intensive, again, like, and then you need the legal resource, and we need to make applications to court in order to get a fine. So there are things that we can do, but we need to keep an eye on repeat offenders and, and see how else we can get them to the point of compliance before we have to go through these resource-intensive steps for really a couple, I mean, it was a bunch of garbage, but that was, to Counselor Hickey's point, it was quicker to clean it up than it was the staff effort to go through the paperwork. So there are things that we need to keep in mind for repeat offenders, and, but voluntary compliance is what our goal is, and we are getting very high rates of that, which is really excellent news.
Thank you, Commissioner. Round two, Counselor Ogden.
Yeah, just to Amy's point, I totally agree. But I think the average taxpayer should know that we are all paying for this, for these people who are not taking care of their buildings. It's costing everybody taxpayers' dollars, and these people, a lot of times, don't live in the city, so they don't have to worry about paying the taxes. But it's citizens of St. John who are fixing these messes up and taking our staff time. So it's costing everybody money, and of course, it's hurting our community. Right?
Thank you, Counselor. This is a receive and file. Counselor Killen, Counselor Redwin on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye, raising your hand. Country-minded, carried. City Clerk?
Thank you, Chair. Next item is under General Correspondence. It's item 15-1 on your agenda, and it's a letter from C. Donovan, request to present slowing measures at King's Street East and Carmarthen Street. There is a staff recommendation to refer this matter to the C A O and to have traffic engineer communicate with the requister.
Moved by Counselor Hickey. Seconder, Counselor Norton on the question. All in favor, aye. Country-minded, carried. City Clerk?
Next is 15-2, and it's a number of citizen letters with respect to 1671 Sandy Point Road, and there's a recommendation to refer these letters to the Growth Committee for consideration.
Motion to refer these 24 letters to Growth Committee. Counselor Redwin and, and Counselor Hickey, thank you. On the question, all in favor, aye. Country-minded, carried 24 times. City Clerk?
Next is 15-3. It's a letter from We Believe requesting to present, and Chair, I believe there's been an updated recommendation on this one.
Yeah, thanks, City Clerk. So the staff found there's no event in St. John this year, and the Grants Committee has already looked at this and denied their application. So the updated recommendation is to receive and file. Anybody like to move the updated recommendation? Counselor Stewart, Counselor Hickey, all in favor signify by saying aye. Country-minded, carried. City Clerk?
Okay, and now we have a, a number of recommendations from Committee of the Whole, so I'll go through those one at a time. There are seven separate resolutions. So the first one is item 17.1, and it's an amended and restated membership agreement with Envision. And the resolution would read that the resolution of council adopted at its April 29th, 2024 meeting regarding an amended and restated members agreement with Envision St. John be amended by deleting the words "April 29, 2024" and replacing them with "June 10, 2024."
Mover. Counselors Killen, Counselor Hickey on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye. Country-minded, carried.
Next item is 17-2, and it's with respect to 160 Thorn Avenue. Timeline update and changes to an agreement of purchase and sale. And the resolution would be that the city enter into an amended and restated agreement of purchase and sale generally in the form as presented to Committee of the Whole at its meeting held on June 10, 2024, with 511978NB Inc. for the parcel land located at 160 Thorn Avenue, PID 55174106, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the said agreement and any documents ancillary thereto are necessary to affect the transaction.
Mover. Counselors Lowe and Norton on the question. All in favor signify by aye. Country-minded, carried.
Next is item 17-3, and this is with respect to a request for expression of interest for former West St. John Tourist Bureau at Civic 1509 St. John Thoroughway. And the resolution is that the city deem the property at Civic 1509 St. John Thoroughway, PID 55011720 as surplus to its needs.
Mover. Counselor Redwin, Counselor Hickey on the question. All in favor signify by aye. Country-minded, carried.
Next is item 17.4 from Committee of the Whole, and this is with respect to a land exchange agreement with Timothy and Donna Collins of Upper Locklomond. And the resolution would read that the city of St. John enter into an agreement with Timothy and Donna Collins to exchange a portion of PID 55055644 for another piece of land identified as PID 349647, and further that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the agreement and any other documents necessary to affect the transaction.
Mover. Counselor Hickey, Counselor Killen on the question. All in favor, aye. Country-minded, carried.
Next is item 17.5. This is with respect to venue management agreement for Trade and Convention Center. And the proposed resolution reads as follows, that the city enter into, that the city enter into a venue management agreement with Global Spectrum Facility Management Limited, doing business as O V G 360, in the form as presented to Committee of the Whole at its meeting held on June 10, 2024, for the purpose of providing management services at St. John Trade and Convention Center, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the said venue management agreement and any other documents ancillary thereto. And I realize a portion of my resolution's cut off here, so I do have a paper copy of that. And part two of that resolution is that the city enter into a funding agreement with Regional Development Corporation, and the form is presented to Committee of the Whole at its meeting held on June 10, 2024, for the purpose of receiving a financial contribution of up to $31,300 for the T C C management agreement study, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the said funding agreement and any other documents ancillary thereto.
Mover. Counselor Redwin, Counselor Hickey on the question. All in favor signify by aye. Country-minded, carried. City Clerk?
And next is 17-6, a legal, the subject is legal proceeding against B G C Engineering, West Wells litigation update, and Torrey's retainer. And the resolution would be that the city, that the city increase Torrey's retainer for legal services requiring in relation to the South Bay well field by a maximum of $633,000 plus H S T and disbursements.
A mover. Counselor Hickey, seconder, Counselor Stewart on the question. All in favor, aye. Country-minded, Counselor Lowe is a nay, but carried.
And the final recommendation from Committee of the Whole is item 17.7, and this is with respect to patio licenses for Market Square Boardwalk. And the resolution is that the city enter into a license agreement with each of A. St. John Beer Market Inc., B. 750559NB Inc., C. Fog Cutter Inc., and D. Crowbell Inc., collectively the licensees, generally in the form as presented to Committee of the Whole at its meeting held on June 10, 2024, for the purpose of allowing the licensees to operate the new enclosed patio spaces at the Etoli Macamak, and mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the said license agreements and any other documents ancillary thereto.
Mover. Counselor Redwin, Counselor Hickey on the question. All in favor, aye. Country-minded, carried. Just before we finish up, just thank you from me to city staff and to council for their support over the last couple of days. It's been interesting, looking forward to the deputy and mayor being back. My note from Deputy Riordan says, item 18, check with Counselor Lowe.
Be adjourned.
Ah, move adjourned. Seconder, Counselor Hickey. Thanks very much, everyone. We're adjourned.